Busy work?
Yeah, both, yeah. But just, yeah. Okay. Johnson travel.
I just took one.
Maybe over here?
I mean, there's still stuff.
That answer just as much.
I don't think so.
Yeah, they want less, less.
Sage, how are you?
Bixon, how are you?
Dennis, how are you?
Good.
Are you sir?
Yeah. Busy trying to get loose ends tied up.
You know who you are now?
I know. Depends on the day.
Okay, let's run this thing.
Pete, Pete Dennis?
Yes.
I'm here, but do you guys have a quorum?
We have a quorum, Sarah. Good night.
Perfect. All right, I'm going back to work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Sarah.
Thanks.
No, she's back home. I could hear the kids in the background. And she was on, she was on deck in case we needed a fifth. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 6 meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. And I would like to ask the clerk at this point to call the roll.
Sure. I'm gonna do my best with the last name.
Oh, good.
Sorry.
Christian Hauser?
Here.
Steve Sage?
Here.
Stuart Bixen?
Bixen, but I've been called worse. Here. Here.
Just this morning.
David Gasson?
Here.
Sarah Kane, we know is not. Matt Stone? Dennis McGee?
Here.
Patricia Clark Martin? And Eric Lord?
Here. Very good, we have a quorum. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Just for the public who might be watching, this is known as a hybrid meeting, which means that under the current state law, and that does wander on us a bit, the actual appointed officials must be in the room. You know, for a while, we were allowed to do this by Zoom, but we can't do that anymore. But our consultants and the public can call in remotely. So just a note to those who might be watching, as we go through the items on the agenda, please feel free to call the number you see in front of you on the screen, and you'll be piped in. You'll get to us. And we love to hear from folks that find interest in these things. So feel free to call in at any point. At this point, number three is public comment. Is there anyone here who has any comment about anything? Preferably things not on the agenda. We'll get to that later, please.
Patricia Kane, 817 West Fourth Street, Rochester.
Welcome, how are you?
You know what? I'm good. I got off work late. Healthcare is probably a mess like everything else is, but we're muddling through.
Good, good.
I'm here tonight, and it's going to be a redo for many of you who have heard this over and over again about residential light ordinance. I have backyard lights through my entire house from across the street still. In my last set of photographs, I only sent a week or two ago to city council, showed it through my trees. The outside backyard light stops inside my bedroom closet. And it goes all the way through the house, out my back door kitchen window. So it goes completely from north to south. It illuminates the lock on my front door, my windows, my entire porch. It illuminates the big plaster arch and the ceiling in my living room. It continues to all my bookshelves in my dining room. And when you stand on the side of my refrigerator, you could put on a puppet show.
Where, where's the house? Across the street or behind?
Across the street.
Right across?
Across the street.
Okay.
And I've gone round and round with this because I fail to understand where the logic is that we could post haste change multi-housing and residential lighting to shield them with complaint. And for Great Oaks, it wasn't measured because they couldn't measure, just like they can't really measure me, but it was taken care of, one, two, three. I am so far down the line on this. I have spent already over $1,050 just to block a light from my kitchens.
Have you talked to that neighbor?
I'm not talking to them.
Okay.
I, I am not going to talk to them. The city did get involved. The one night I was able to flag down our fire chief, who came in my house and admitted he saw the lights. I pointed, said, "Look, look, look." And he tried to tell me, "Well, it's like moonlight." I tried to tell him, "The moon isn't at eye level, coming right at you with the glare." When I have gone and asked that we change this ordinance so it is complaint-driven, nobody should have to prove anything. My photographs have more than proved what's happening. So my property has been devalued all this time. I am at safety and risk for people for falling. I even had to notify my insurance company because of the glare. I have lost privacy. Can't sit on the porch unless you sit like this and face a different direction because you are illuminated. It is through my tree, so I don't want anybody saying, "Oh, you've got all this foliage, it's hidden." It is not, and I've proved that already with the photographs. A simple shield would do it. Simple ordinance change. You've got me caught where I can't do anything.
Nick, I know the chief has, basically, and he's not here tonight.
He can't measure it right. Now, I'm just gonna kind of cut this really quick.
Okay.
Because I think I'm, I'm at a point where I did notify council. I wanted it taken care of within about 10 days. I have been given promises. I have been talked to. I have been given the emails from our then-city manager that it would be taken care of, and it hasn't. And well, here's what I fail to understand. I don't know if it's money involved.
What do you mean by that?
I don't know if it's the worth of a house.
What do you mean by that?
I have a small bungalow. We're in a compressed area downtown. Fourth Street area, Castell Taylor. Those houses are on top of each other because of zoning, because they're allowed to. And when we even questioned how they're being built like this, you know what we were told? They have property rights. My property rights were given to somebody across the street to dictate the illumination in my house all through the night. That should be my choice to illuminate my property, inside or out. My choice. I have to buy all new window coverings, and I still won't have the use of my property. Those window coverings, even though I have lined curtains or drapes, aren't heavy enough to block it.
So just, let me, let me make...
Okay.
So this is only the house directly across the street?
Yeah.
I want to make sure the staff understands.
Yes, yes.
Not to the right or the left, not behind.
I'm right across the other guy.
Is this a newer house?
No. And for 40 years, there's been light fixtures up there, and we've never had this type of issue.
But they put new?
Yeah, everything, yeah. You know what it's like. But I will tell you this. What, what upsets me most is, does anybody understand that glare is glare? Light pollution is light pollution, and structure is structure. Bricks and mortars are the same. The only thing that changes the bricks and mortar is zoning, and that is the use of the building. You can't change trespass, light trespass. You can't change glare in building to building. And how can people that have two or three people living in a place which is called the multi-housing have it taken care of, or more, and somebody that's one-on-one can't? That to me seems, I take this word in the right sense, discriminatory. If you're one-on-one, you're screwed. If you're one-on-five, you're done. But they could have theirs done. When it was approached at this body, it was said, "There wasn't any interest." You're supposed to represent everybody, and that includes the little old houses, the 823 square bungalows, the compressed areas, the people that aren't making $100,000 or living in a million-dollar house. And you're supposed to represent all of us and not just kind of kick the can down the road because it's a single complaint. It is not a single complaint. It's a situation where people are afraid to come forward because as they have all told me, "You're gonna get nowhere." They don't care. And you know what? I can honestly say it's been how long? I have a letter that was signed, and it said, the closing line is this. "The ordinance appears to be worth our consideration, and we will continue to evaluate it for possible application to Rochester." Planning Commission paid a whole lot of money for Berchler to do this, and I've got the letter, at least a copy of the letter, okay? They came back, and we said, "Let's do it." No. You know why? Because we found out some of the lighting measurements were skewed. And when we approved it to planning, which made it even worse, they go, "I think we're just, we spent the money, we're done with this." I'm devalued. My property tax went up. That's not right. It's the interior of my house, so who owns it on the tax rolls? Does the city give my rights to the neighbor? That's what's happened. I'm on the tax rolls.
Nick, can I ask you to respond?
Alls I can tell is that the chief went out. It doesn't meet, it doesn't violate any ordinances. Pat's talking about something to fix the problem.
Yeah, because I'll tell you what, you've got me...
So the chief measured the luminance, or however he does it?
Our report to city council was, "There's no violation." Pat's admitted that. She wants to have something fixed so that that situation is a violation.
The reason it's not a violation is because of the standards you have in your ordinance that allows this. And you water down the nuisance ordinance. And this is, this is where the ordinance comes from. And so that's the problem. So I am going to live in my house with this bright white glare, eye level, for the rest of my life?
Pat...
I'm frustrated. Dennis, you gotta do that.
All I can, all I can tell you is that, at least from where I sit here, I will ask people to look at this again.
Thank you.
I'll come by your, I have not come by at night and looked. I've left that to staff. But sometime, I'm, I'm gonna try to do that.
Thank you. We're in an older neighborhood. And quite frankly, we have lights. They're never on all night, and they don't trespass anywhere. We have another neighbor on the other side of us who's been kinder, but guess what? We have a garage light into the other bedroom all the time because of elevation. By rights, it should be shielded. It's not, but you know what? Live with it. We have these lights direct all in this front of our house. That's his backyard. But what's worse is, he never has a window on, open. They're all shuttered all the time.
Give us a month or two. I know. I can't, I can't solve it tonight.
No, no, I'm gonna tell you. The frustration of having this for over a year, better than a year, and being passed around like a ping pong ball as a human with my investment in my house, I'm saying is unacceptable. And I'll tell you why. See this? This to this is six inches. If your grass is this tall, you're in violation. Because in your ordinance, it says, "It is a threat to the health, safety, and welfare. It adversely and adversely affects all of the residents of Rochester." This does, and it's enforced. But that big bright light with glare, devaluing my property and taking away my rights, is okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm just, I know how I feel.
Any comments from any of the commissioners?
Yes. If I may.
Yeah.
So Pat, I understand your situation.
You do, I know.
I know you where you live. I know the neighbor's very... But I'm gonna say something, and I think the chairman asked you a question.
Yeah.
Have you tried talking to the guy?
No.
And it, let me ask you, hold on. I recently had an issue with my neighbor. We talked about it. Nick came out. We met on a Friday morning. And literally in, what, 15 minutes?
You solved it?
We solved it.
Well, if a city person...
I'll, I'll come.
Hold on, hold on.
I'll come with you.
I can't, because he's...
You don't have to talk to him. Nick can be the, I don't want to force you into this. But what I'm saying is, is that sometimes...
Pat, that helps sometimes. When people meet each other face-to-face, it disarms the situation.
And it was completely fine. And we, he had an issue, I had issues, and you know what? We worked out a resolution, and it's been perfect. So I would encourage you to reach out and say, "Listen, Nick, I can't talk to this guy. There's too much frustration. But can we come at a solution that solves both problems for him and for you?"
Well, listen, why I can't? I'm just gonna very briefly tell you.
Go ahead. Why can't you?
When the city plows would come by, and we were clean and clear, and I shoveled, I hand shovel the whole driveway. My husband can't because of his cancer.
I understood.
You ready for this? He would come with his snow blower and blow his whole driveway into our driveway and cars. So when I had to correct that after a few times of going out there reshoveling and telling him, it becomes a little uncomfortable. Having his garbage seven days a week at the edge of his driveway and in the gutter, yard waste and everything, for me to look at out my windows, my living room, seven days a week. He's got the stuff there again. But now he, he was told, so you know where he puts it? Right at the edge of the sidewalk. So you know what? I'm not going to do this.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, is it sounds like it's getting a little bit tit-for-tat. And I would suggest...
No, this is just him.
Well, okay, well, and others may say it's just you. But what I would suggest is, if you reach out to Nick, and you do it the way, and you have a meeting, and there's, it's non-confrontational, I would like to think that that would be the solution rather than changing ordinances and doing all this stuff because that seems to be a problem to fix a very isolated issue.
We need to change the ordinance.
But I would start with that.
Okay, we can start with it, but the ordinance needs to be updated. It is archaic, outdated, outmoded to today's way of living.
Well, with your permission, Nick could get ahold of you, and you see what you can work out.
Okay, but then at the same time, I still want to enforce this because I don't think this is going to work knowing how this gentleman is.
We'll wait to hear back from Nick.
You know what?
Don't get into a confrontation with your neighbor.
It's my whole, that's why I'm not, I haven't. But I'm gonna tell you, it is my whole summer again.
Yeah.
We can't even have a window open. And this has been going on since October of '21. So, no, October of '20.
'20.
Yeah, and you know what? You have no idea what you're taking away. And I'm going to tell you. My husband's, one of his things he does when the cancer is so bad afterward, late at night, we sit on the porch for that fresh air and for the space, the feeling of letting go because the cramping and the pain is so bad. He is going to be retiring. But right now, that's a purpose that keeps him going and alive. We can't. We've lost even that. And how frustrated is to see him busting his butt at 82 at work on a house he's paying for, and we don't have a use because some stranger across the street has taken over because of language and ordinances, two ordinances. And we have no remorse.
We're gonna try.
Okay, Dennis, I'm gonna...
Hold me to it, yes. I know you will.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome, Ms. Kane.
Okay, any other members of the public with public comment? And no calls, no calling, it's okay. Very good, thank you. Number four, approval of the minutes. A, consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 4. Everyone's reviewed them. We have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
So moved.
Support. Who has support here?
Support.
Christian supports. Any discussion on these minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
David.
My copy has draft across it. Are we approving the draft version of the minutes?
It's drafted, do we approve?
As soon as you approve it, it's, it's the real deal.
Thank you for the understanding.
And they'll take that off, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the roll call, please.
Member Hauser?
Yes.
Member Sage?
Yes.
Number Gasson?
Yes.
Mayor Bixen?
Yes.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Number Lord?
Yes.
Hey, thank you very much. No public hearings tonight, that's number five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I jump around here a little bit. So Jeff, could you hang on one second? I'd like to introduce our staff. So I've got, I've got some, a late update on something that we always seem to get surprised with. So, as you know, we, I'm being replaced. We'll put that.
Congratulations.
So there's a couple, thank you. Eventually, yeah. So there's a couple pieces to that. So we divvied up the job into two different things. And what matters to this board would be the planning and zoning side, so that, actually, the community development director. So this is Mr. Patrick Maher. Pat, you wanna come up there for a second? And let, he'll introduce himself, but with his background. So Patrick's got, you're gonna hear this, he's got a lot of experience. This is in his first rodeo. Owned his own planning company that his dad started. Then they've been around a long time. So he's, he's going to be the face that will run, that will be here, what I would be doing for... And the direct interaction with Vidia, so when plans come in, they go to Patrick. He's already digging into things that we've already gotten and do the cursory review, work with Vidia to get the staff, get Vidia online with what staff's looking at. So he'll be the direct connection.
Pat, what's your last name again?
Maher.
Maher.
It's pronounced like M-A-H-E-R.
Okay, how do you spell it?
M-E-A-G-H-E-R.
Good Irish slang. And then, not, without disrespecting Patrick, the bones behind this whole thing's gonna be Rose McKinney. So Rose is right there, and thank you for...
Rose, what's your last name?
McKinney.
McKinney. So Rose comes in with, she retired from our public service for how many? 27 years?
27 years.
27 years, planning, zoning, everything you can imagine. So she stepped in and took the dual job of Siana Hall, who was our planning, or our zoning coordinator, our permits coordinator, I'm sorry, and then Megan Deetering, which was the building clerk. So we put, we put those two together to see if one person can handle it. I don't think there's too many people that could handle that on their own. Rose can handle it. Rose has been here for how long already? Month?
About a month, yeah.
And she just picked up, unbelievable. So she's the front contact with the developers. When people come in, and they used to talk to Siana to coordinate the process, to get the paperwork in, to get it right, and then get that to Patrick, and then that team will keep working this through to get it to Vidia, to get it to the Planning Commission. So I, I couldn't be more happy with how stable these two are gonna make the process. And, and Rose, so to make it work today, out of nowhere, at 4 o'clock, Rose comes down, "Ah, I think we got a little issue." So you would see Courtney would be our minute taker. She just said, "Oh, I'm not gonna be there tonight." Oh, and I quit. I got another job, and I can't do it.
Oh, thanks.
It's like, "Well, thanks for letting us know today at 4 o'clock." Rose is like, "Ah." So I don't, she's got a very full plate. So her first priority is for building, the building department. That's, that was a full-time job for Megan. Megan's very organized. Rose is extremely organized. So the commitment to Randy McClure, our building official, was, he gets Rose first and make sure all that's done. She's so efficient at it that there seems to be this bandwidth to be able to handle Siana's part. So again, we're not raging through 17 items on a planning commission anymore. It doesn't seem to be that way. It's gonna ramp up with the, the planning and zoning ordinances and stuff. But that's where Patrick comes in because Patrick's been through that. 38 communities, he'll tell you, master plans, all that stuff. So he can take some of that burden off of Rose. Rose should be able to handle the, together, to get the files together, follow that process that we set up. We're not breaking the process down at all. It's worked, right? Siana was organized. She had it in files, we knew where we could find things. We knew how to communicate with the developers, get back to them, make sure that when it gets here, it's ready. Between the two of them, it appears that's doable. I don't know that taking minutes of eight-item planning commission things possible. We were paying Courtney out of, out of a consulting fund. Rose said, "We looked at the minutes, and she thinks she's gonna take a shot at them to see if we can handle it." They're not verbatim, that helps. They're, they can be recorded. I just don't want to burn her out. I don't think you guys would want to burn her out either because that's...
So you're actually gonna be typing these out, then? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We're kind and gentle. You don't have to worry about us.
I've done it in the past.
Yeah, okay.
It's not that she can't handle. I just want to make sure, because Randy's, gets a little nervous that we gotta make sure we keep the building department rolling because it's very busy there right now. We're really doing well, so we're happy, so...
So welcome to both of you. And we're delighted to have the experience, obviously. I don't know if you know much about us as individuals, but it's a pretty heady group that we have put together up here. And you may have encountered some of these people professionally over the, over the years. So any help you can give us, we appreciate it. Love to have you at the meetings, love to have your input at the meetings. And, you know, it's a little slow right now, but believe me, it hasn't been. Rose, I mentioned this earlier. This is a small town like Fraser, but we're going through redevelopment. Developers are spotting these properties and have a lot of grandiose plans. And it's been very interesting the last few years, picking our way through those things and coming to a resolution. We've been surviving, but your expertise is, will be much appreciated. So welcome aboard.
And Patrick, could just give you a little bit of background about what community planning was so you understand his background and, and how to pick his brain as we go on because that's a great resource sitting right there, I can tell you right now, so...
I think Nick said about 99% of it. But I'll give you a quick rundown. I ran a planning firm for probably just under 30 years and decided to streamline and quiet my life down a little bit. So I was, got rid of the firm. Started working with Macomb Township. And we were doing a ton of work in Macomb at the time. And I think the first year I was there, they did almost 2,000 single-family permits. I left Macomb after four or five years and went up to Washington Township, became the community development director there. Worked there for the last three years, and here I am today. So I've been here about three weeks so far, enjoying it. And it's like we got a lot of good projects coming down the road, and I'm excited to be here. So, anyway, I can help, I guess, would be the better question. You know, please don't hesitate to call me and let me know what you're looking for, and I'll try to facilitate anything from the staff end.
And I can commit to what I've, I've never, I don't know how to train, And I can commit to what, what I've, I've never, I, I don't know how to train, but there's no training in this field. We, we've both been, you live it, right? And you just deal with it when the question comes in. He understands the zoning arts. He understands the whole process. So the, the thing that I can help with is take road trips now and start telling the stories about the city. So when he sees it, as it comes in on the new planning zoning districts, there's a story behind it and he's grasped those fast already, which again, it's just time and grade to get the feel for the community. He's done it with so many communities, nothing's phasing him. And I didn't know this was going to happen. But the third piece of this is Alec Mizikar. So Alec is our, the hire that I talked to you about before. Um, we created this position called the Public Services Coordinator slash Economic Development Director. So Alex filling in, so he's running basically the yard, the DPW, the DPW Public Services Division. Yet we needed, Patrick's going to have his hands full in the next two years with all this planning and zoning stuff. So. So Christie and the DDA pay for a portion of this, my job. It was like thirty-eight percent. And we, I made sure the, I'm sorry, the city council made sure and the mayor made sure that when we put this job out, we included that so that we could tap those dollars because they need that handholding a bit on economic development. It's not a full-time job, but it's a, it's a team thing with Christie and, and that board. They expect certain things. So between Patrick and Alec, they'll be able to handle that also. So we kind of did a shotgun approach and it looks like to me it's going to work well. And I'm excited for the city that we've got. We're in good hands. And I think that's very cool. So Alec thinks, I didn't know you were going to show up tonight, but he must not have a life either.
Welcome. He just snuck in on you.
He snuck in on me. I saw him. You're all right. So it's good to see you. So, so yeah, he's, he did planning and zoning or zoning administrator in, um, East Grand Rapids and in Cooper'sville, west side of the state. So we're glad to have him move. He moved here, got a place here now, and we're trying to get him to play some roots here.
What's Al's last name?
Mizikar.
Alec.
Alec. A L E, it's Alexander with a K, but he goes by Alec, A L E K.
Spell your last name.
It's, uh, M I Z I K A R.
Very good.
Now he's tall as the mayor. That's good. We got somebody as tall as the mayor now. So.
We'll go back later.
Yeah, there we go. So yeah, that's, that's the team. And that's, that's how we're, we're in good hands.
We welcome you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Nick, you might as well, uh, let's see. Jeff, are you there?
He's there.
There he is.
I am.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, Steve.
I just wanted to welcome, uh, all three of you. Obviously I think I've met Alec before, Rose, I'm not quite sure, but, uh, welcome. And Patrick, so given your experience, uh, the wealth of experience, have you had a chance to read our master plan?
I have read it and I've.
Do you have any suggestions?
I, I think you guys did a great job on it, to be honest. I don't see it as a far departure from your previous master plan. So it seems to embrace most of those policies and enhance some of them. So, you know, I see you added a section on sustainability in there and, you know, excellent job you guys did on that with McKenna and Associates. So, you know, definitely not a canned piece of literature that came out of, uh, the planning consulting world. So.
Mr. Jeff, if I may.
Was it McKenna, right?
We were going to talk about, yeah, uh, well, McKenna did the, the base one and then Beckett Raider did this one. But, but what Patrick spent the first probably two weeks on was analyzing the two documents side by side. And then we're going to look at what, what changed. So things changed and we didn't go into that detail on that. That's what was going to happen tonight, which I'll fill you in on in a minute. That's the next step in the process. Molding those two documents from two thousand fourteen to what we just did and make them make sense. That turns into a zoning ordinance that makes sense with the new districts all locked in and set to go. So that's the journey that we're going to be on for the next eighteen months. You guys are going to be on for the next eighteen months.
Do you see an amendment to the currently approved master plan when, okay, in a couple of years, we'll say.
Not even that. I bet you as you work through them, you might want to tweak some of the districts, which we can do at that time. So nothing, I, I think Patrick's right. There's nothing major in there. It's, we have to now decide, does that make sense in the real world knowing what we've been through the last five years? What, what things didn't get built that said they were going to get built? Do we still want those? Things like that. And that's, that's the, the dialogue that's going to take place quickly as we go every month. So I think it's going to be a pretty fun time.
Very good.
And then our city attorney does a great job of, he'll find stuff that doesn't work. And, and Steve Zoak, he used to always come to the meetings, remember, and say, if it doesn't work, why do you have it on the books? Jeff is really good at finding those and said, well, we're not afraid to fix them. Let's fix them. And that's what this next item is about.
So we're going to go backwards now and, uh, A, Jeff is yours. Discussion to amend Article twenty-seven?
Yes, thank you. So, um, we were having a discussion internally about the site plan review and, um, and the, the matter doesn't matter. But, you know, we, we actually took a look at twenty-seven oh three. And if you look, and that's the, the provision for, uh, taking action on a site plan, which is obviously what this body does all the time. Um, and we were a little bit, you know, when we took a look and really saw what the, um, what the words say, it really doesn't give a true picture as to how things actually operate. Um, so what the, uh, the one paragraph, um, of twenty-seven oh three, the subsection A, we decided to expand it to really kind of, um, think of it as an as-built for how we actually do things at the city with, at Planning Commission. Uh, so I attempted to, in layman's terms, kind of put forth like what the real process is that the city goes through. Um, because right now, if you look at it, it says that a decision, um, to approve, dis, uh, disapprove or request modification would need to take place within forty-five days of the middle of the site plan, which is, is really an unworkable timeframe, especially when, um, the current ordinance doesn't actually require a public hearing on all site plans, which as this body knows, this body does set, um, um, public hearings for each site plan. And I believe that that's a policy that, um, Planning Commission probably intends to keep. I mean, I think there's a lot of valuable input, um, and, uh, no neighbor surprises when it comes to, to projects and that come before Planning Commission. And those, you know, public hearings come with notices to people within a certain amount of feet, a certain amount of time before the meetings, publication in the newspaper. So what we did is we went through it and, and really sketched through how this works, how it, in reality it works, which is it sets, you know, when, when the applicant submits the, uh, application for site plan, it goes to the planner. Planner takes a look and if the planner thinks it's ready, uh, to proceed to Planning Commission, then it gets scheduled. If there's, uh, oftentimes Planning Commission has, has gotten heartburn because things come before it that, uh, really aren't ready to go. And so this now, this process, uh, allows the planner to do really what she does now, which is to, to vet it, uh, to make sure it's complete. She's not saying it's good or bad. It's just, is it complete or not? Um, and then once, once that process, uh, when she takes a look at it and it's ready to go, then it gets scheduled for, um, Planning Commission to review. And then once Planning Commission is ready, and that could be the first meeting that it sees it, or it could be, um, later on if they request changes, which this body often does. Um, and then when it, once it's ready, uh, when Planning Commission feels it's ready to be considered, then that's when it gets set for a public hearing. Um, then, you know, what does public hearing require? Well, there's different public hearing requirements for different things in the code. And so rather than trying to piecemeal and figure out, uh, what applies to site plans, um, I put it in, in subsection A four, uh, which is, that's the notices, it's the fifteen day notice before the public hearing. And that's to people within three hundred feet plus the newspaper, um, which is very similar, uh, language to other parts of, of the code that already have public hearings. Um, and then only after the public hearing does the Planning Commission approve, disprove or request further modification or additional information. Um, so I, I think it's really, I, I don't think you, when you read this, it's earth shattering, but if what it does is it actually lets the reader know what is the expectation, what's the process? Uh, because we do hear on occasion that, uh, well, you know, when is it, you know, we need to have it in front of Planning Commission. Well, if the planner's not ready for it, you know, that, the planner needs additional time, whatnot. Um, it doesn't jump right to a public hearing. It, only when it's ready and it's a good product, uh, for consideration, does it then get set. So, um, I, I hope it, it, it's more of a, a plain language. Sometimes attorneys, uh, Christian Hauser specifically, um, tend to, uh, get, uh, I had to, Christian, I had to.
That's okay.
But tried to make it more readable, uh, than, than other parts, just so people get an idea. So, um, I, I think it's a good, uh, change. It's more words, but I think it's a, it lays out the process. Well, if Planning Commission wants to proceed with its current procedure and likes the way it's set up here, then, uh, the request would be then to set the matter for a public hearing since it's a zone, it would be a zoning ordinance change. So, um, I'm here to answer questions or to talk through it, but I think it captures how we do it in reality.
So we will be requiring public hearings in some cases where it hasn't been required in the past, although we, we've probably been doing it anyway. But this is.
That's correct. That's correct. Now if Planning Commission, so just I guess for further, so this only reflects the way that it, it actually is happening, which is a public hearing for, uh, really any site plan review that, that you do. Uh, the Zoning Enabling Act does not require, uh, a planning commission for a simple, uh, I'm sorry, a public hearing for a, uh, simple site plan review. So this is really putting into practice. It's, you know, the home rule city allows, and the zoning enabling act allows the city to set its own process. So if Planning Commission doesn't want to have the requirement of having a public hearing, but only make it, uh, optional, like perhaps, uh, if it feels like it'd be beneficial, uh, to have a, a public hearing, we could certainly change that. But at least whichever way Planning Commission wants to go, it's probably a good idea to put it down on the paper.
Eric, you had a question?
Well, I just, um, thinking through, uh, the timeliness of an applicant getting through the process. Um, the way that we have it now, so an applicant submits their, you know, full application, gets reviewed by staff and consultants for completeness. And then once they deem it complete, they send it to us, which we then will look at it and set a public hearing. So now they've gone through that process. It comes to us. We set a public hearing, which would be technically a month or so later, the next meeting. Is there any way to just, if, if the staff deems it complete, can't they put it on the agenda and set the public hearing at that time rather than having, do we have to make a motion for a public hearing?
You, you don't, you don't have to. Um, that's just, I, I think staff might be a little, you know, and maybe more of the, the more basic ones, uh, because oftentimes I think it's safe to say, and Nick can correct me, but I think staff sometimes thinks it's ready to be set for a public hearing where Planning Commission, after they, they chew on it for a while, they want to see a different plan come back before it gets set for a public hearing. So I, I, I think, you know, either way is, is okay. Um, I just think in practice, I think Planning Commission typically wants to see it before it comes to a public hearing, but it, that certainly to speed up the process. I mean, uh, Commissioner Lord, your, your, your concern is, you know, sometimes these things stretch out for months when it really probably doesn't need to. So it could easily be that the administration sets up for a public hearing because that still doesn't require Planning Commission to take action at that, that meeting. It just means that that's where the, the, um, the applicant adds its, the, the, the public hearing. So it absolutely, we could work into, once administration feels it's, it's, uh, complete and ready for a public hearing, that could be the first time Planning Commission sees it. Uh, that, that's not a bad change.
Well, I, I, I think I've, I've, that seems to be the process that I'm typically accustomed to. Patrick can probably speak a little more to that, having more experience in other communities. But particularly with straight zoning parcels, if, if, if it's straight zoned, so you're not going in for a, you know, a special project or, um, uh, special land use or, or something like that. If it's just a straight zoned piece of property and you're just following the ordinance, I would like to look for ways to get people through that process. We're still going to have, you know, dialogue and still have input. And if we want to allow a public hearing or have a public hearing regardless, that's fine. But I just, I feel like sometimes some of the applications that come through here, we could do a little better from a timeliness standpoint for some of these less complicated ones.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so I, I, my two hats. So economic development says, why are we wasting thirty days? I get that. But I'll tell you this, happens at council all the time and rightly so. For, in order for us to do that, we have to put it in the paper, probably about twenty-one days before. We have to have at least fifteen days to put twenty-one days. That means the public will know there is a public hearing. And if anybody calls any of you, you're going to say, what are you talking about? We're throwing it out there before anybody in, internally here even knows that the thing exists. So we're so clear with the developers about, yeah, you're, if you get your stuff in in time, we're going to get you to that meeting. And then it's only, it's one meeting, it's thirty days and you're ready to have a decision made. So there is safety in that thirty days because it's pretty hard to get a clean site plan to you guys through the first time. You almost always will schedule it, but there's a lot of backwork that's got to get done to get it ready for that. But I would, I think you might get nervous if that's the first time you even hear about it and the public's known about it for three weeks before Forest Ridge. The whole neighborhood wouldn't know because they'd all have got notices and it would have been in the paper. Everybody within three hundred fifty feet would get a notice before.
I would get nervous about that. And then there's the added pressure of, well, you held a public hearing. But then after the public hearing's held, we're going to say, we're not ready to proceed.
Right. And we could table it and I get that. So it just seems like thirty days isn't very long. If it was two months, that's different. But thirty days seems like a reason.
I definitely see that from the developer's side. I'm, I'm trying to think in terms of the planning commissioner's side. Also public transparency. I, I don't think any harm is done by time passing, a little bit of time passing in a public hearing.
Yeah, I was just, right. I was just thinking if, if, if we're not obligated to do a public hearing, but we're saying we're going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
And if a project comes along, that's just not controversial, it's just, you know, and but yet that's, that's what we're going to do. We're going to put them through a public hearing.
Is there a way to, um, in those cases, give the staff?
So that, I was, I was thinking about, we're going to have one tonight that we're going to talk about. So a pure elevation change.
Yeah.
We, by the way we do it, Jeff, we pointed it out, it's still a public hearing and a site plan, even though it's just an elevation change, which means Vidya has to demand a site plan. In the case, we're going to talk about the Spartan Inn. There was no site plan we could find. This guy had to create the whole site plan just to get elevation change. He's not touching the ground. Now, having said that, when he comes in front of this board, I'm going to predict that you all might look at it and say, can't you get rid of that driveway in the front that's all concrete? That means it's a change of the site plan, which means you need the site plan. So again, he, we met with him today and said, he submitted his plans and it's got, Patrick did a pretty good thorough review on it. It's like, you need about twenty more things in this plan or Vidya's going to chew you up because you don't meet any of the ordinance requirements. So on the checklist. So again, he understood the thirty days and we counsel them upfront, hurry up and get it done. You don't have to do everything on a checklist, but there's probably very few that would be so clean that you'd be comfortable with us going ahead before you even knew about it. It, it just doesn't seem to happen that much since I've been here. And I don't like it, but I think to be safe for you guys, it's.
So what we're saying is we probably best to leave it like it's written here.
And, and clarify, so like Jeff said, you can follow your way through it. And they don't say, why are you doing a public hearing? Because it's not in the ordinance, right, Jeff? So.
Yeah.
So now it will be. So we would ask to set a public hearing for the ordinance next week, the next month and get it rolling. So.
Christian, if I may, if I look at section two seven oh three, A four, it talks about three hundred feet. And Nick, I think you just said three fifty. Okay, that's right, whatever it is. If it's three hundred feet, is it typically, let's say it's residential, is it about three houses on each side? Is that how it works?
Usually it's, so it'd be about five.
Five houses on each side?
Sixty foot lot.
Sixty foot? Okay. So they're going to do that. And then is it behind two or is it just, it's like a radius?
Yeah. So you'd actually go to every point on that map and we have a computer program that just goes from the outside periphery of the property, three hundred feet all the way around the circle.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. Excluding right ways.
Excluding right ways, yeah.
Any other comments? I don't think we're unduly burdening ourselves. In fact, we're probably not going to do things much different than we have. Is that correct? We're just putting it in right?
That, that's correct. That's, this was trying to put in place what you're already doing, just codifying it. So it's, it's more clear and linear.
So next step is to set this for a public hearing?
That's correct. Since it's a, right, since it's a, a zoning ordinance amendment, it does require a public hearing at this, at this stage. So that would be the, the, the next request. And so we bring it back at the July meeting.
Do we have, do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Mayor moves? David, I think you.
Support.
Okay. Any other discussion? So it'll be set for a public hearing at the, uh, next meeting likely July. Okay.
We usually say next available meeting, so in case the paper messes us up. So.
Okay.
Roll call, please. Here.
Yes.
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 Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item, uh, six B, uh, discussion of ordinance changes pursuant to the master plan.
So if I may, so our plan, our plan, when I talked to the chairman last week was this was going to be a one item, uh, meeting. And we were going to simply talk about the next steps in taking the new master plan that was adopted by this body in the city council and tell you, have McKenna walk you through their team, how they're going to work with Patrick and Rose to make this thing happen. And at three o'clock this afternoon, John Jackson called and he tested positive for COVID. He said, I could say that. He's doing okay, but it obviously couldn't come here. Raphael is the person that we met. Patrick and I have been talking to him. That's going to be the team leader with Vidya, but it's mostly Raphael, who's a, a good experienced planner with John Jackson leading it. We need John's face here. He understands the former.
So this is put off till a future meeting?
Right. So, but, but we want to schedule it forward. The last item here under, um, D is to schedule June sixteenth meeting. That was for a couple of reasons, but now we want that to be primarily for John to come here, explain the process, give us a timeframe.
Everybody, everybody okay for a second meeting in June?
Yes.
Okay.
Going to casino that night?
Twice.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So that would be, so we'll put this item on the sixteenth and.
You don't need a motion on that.
Uh, I think we should have a motion to set up a regular, it would be a regular meeting, but a special regular meeting.
So the motion would be to schedule, uh, a special meeting for what date?
July six, I'm sorry, June sixteenth.
June sixteenth?
Seven P M.
Uh, so we, do we have a motion to that effect?
Eric.
Support.
Eric and Christian on that one. Uh, roll call, please.
It's Bixen, just.
Bixen, I'm sorry.
You're right. It's okay.
Yes. But he does ride a bike.
Oh, number Yassin.
Yes.
Number Hauser?
Yes.
Number Lord?
Yes.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Number Sage?
Yes.
Great. Okay.
Thank you. Took care of B and D there. I appreciate that.
So C, update on St. John's portable classrooms.
So, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission, so about a year ago, um, almost to the date, we had a planning commission meeting and at that time, the members of the St. John's community came in and talked about the next step in their plans. Remember we had approved, uh, two portable classrooms. And then because of COVID, because of all the reasons, the, their group came in and said, hey, we're going to, we're asking for permission to build two more classrooms to get us through this ongoing world situation. And then, um, to, for two portable classrooms and then we'll, we'll hopefully be ready to do the permanent structure. They did all the site work, all done, perfect landscaping. Everything's ready for, to build the pad for the next phase. At that meeting, uh, I thought I was, I was standing at the planning commission and said, you know what? Instead of trying to jam it in a year, you're never going to get done in a year. You guys made a recommendation to them. We'll give you a two-year extension on those trailers. You don't have to come back, but we'd like to hear an update in a year. So Terry and I were talking and he said, no time in the better, it's a year. If you could come forward. They don't have concrete plans yet, but Terry and the staff can tell you where they're headed. And then we would fulfill, fulfill that obligation that we told you we would come back in a year to give you an update.
Okay. Gentlemen.
Good evening, lady and gentlemen. My name is Steve Goss. I'm the director of operations at St. John now. Uh, Terry Gosner was mentioned earlier and Gary Koappas, uh, is going to be our acting architect on that. Um, St. John has been an important fixture in this community for over a hundred years. Uh, and we're very excited that God has placed us here to be able to be an important aspect for this community and for the growth, uh, that we anticipate that we're seeing here. Uh, the challenges that we had, that everyone experienced through the pandemic, uh, continued on through the state. We actually just, uh, about a month ago, got approval from the state, um, uh, Board of, uh, Code, uh, Business Code and Commissions, uh, to finally utilize the second portable. So we went the entire school year having the portable on our building, on our campus, empty, that we couldn't use for classroom.
Why did that happen?
Uh, there was some code issues that they wanted to make sure they were falling back on with getting core samples done on the concrete pads. They wanted to check the anchoring on it. They had lots of delays on their end as well. Uh, but it's all in the past. We're thankful. We got full access to be able to use the classrooms. Uh, but the state did say with the approval that we only have extension for two more school years. So June of twenty twenty-four, the portables have to be removed. Uh, so that has bumped up our timeframe for what we're looking at for the building expansion that we have, uh, planned to do. Uh, as Nick mentioned earlier, our team has been working diligently with our constituents because we have to fund this as well, doing some changes from the original thought that they had five years ago, I think it was originally, uh, that we need to be a little bit more intentional with how we're going to be doing this. So we're in the midst of finally, uh, finalizing all of that, getting our build cost analysis done as well. finalizing all of that, getting our build cost analysis done as well, and being ready to bring it all before this commission, hopefully in the August meeting.
Okay. For construction, construction would commence then through the fall and winter?
Yeah, well, we're anticipating that we'll be breaking ground in the spring. We.
Spring of twenty-three?
Spring of twenty-three, correct.
Okay.
We said if we have donors that are ambitious and wanna fund it eighty percent upfront, we'd be more than happy to break ground in the fall, but we need to be more realistic, and we're probably looking at the spring of a groundbreaking.
Any questions? How are you doing census-wise? I would imagine like all the private schools, you.
We are busting at the seams.
Busting at the seams.
Yep. I think it was two weeks ago, our principal, we were in a congregational meeting, and our principal was asked, well, how does it look for the expansion that we need for classrooms? Our director of admissions said, if we had two more classrooms right now available for just our preschool level, it would fill within one day. So we have a waitlist on several classes moving up, and it's really exciting, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
If I can publicly thank the church, we, Helen is coming, right? That's our next full street reconstruction, so we did, we met with the church, we met with McGregor School, the school district, and separately, so we could try to shorten our impact on those folks, and they agreed we were gonna start this Monday, today, which would have been one week before school's out, and Chris from DePoneo appreciated them being willing to work with that, because some rerouting, even though they're just milling the street in the beginning, it's still gonna cause a bit of chaos in the beginning, and because they were so willing, Chris put it off a week, and he's not gonna lose time. So we'll only impact them at the school year in the fall, but we'll have a good plan by then. We should have, you know, the road down, there won't be any sewers where you can't pass that road. So we're trying to minimize the impact on the folks on Alice and McGregor and St. John's, and they've been great to work with.
You are doing a full rebuild, though.
That's coming all the way out, everything, water, sewer, storm, the whole deal. So that's a load load, is what it is.
Very good.
We're ready to go, starting Monday.
So right now, their two-year time limit with us would take them through next school year.
So if they, they wouldn't be done by next May, they would have to come back one more time. Then if we see it under construction, obviously, they've got a, excuse me, a deadline from the state now, which is a year past ours. But we can deal with that.
Which could work well with how this unfolds. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
You said that it's the gym going up? Is that?
No, it's gonna be a two-story classroom building outside the back of the existing gym structure that's there right now. So it'd be on the south side of the building. If you're on our campus at all, the portables are on the, what is that, the southwest end of the building there. It's directly east of where the portables are at, and directly south of the existing building is where the structure would be located at.
So it's different than what we saw originally?
Yes, correct. And just so you have a correct record for my, the spelling of my last name, it's G.A.U.S.S.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Will that entrance complicate construction at all, or does it have to be open to? Okay. So remain closed. Very good. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for the update. We appreciate you. Okay, D, we already did.
We did.
Any other miscellaneous, Nick?
Other than under nine, what we would talk about is upcoming events, so, so we've been, it's picking up here again with kinda weird things that takes some time to work things through. So I'll give you a quick update. So item A there is the Rochester Corner Bar, which is Penny Black now. So I'm not gonna remember Chris's last name. Do you remember, Patrick, what his last name was?
No.
So.
Change of ownership.
Yes, so they bought, they bought from Jeff LeCurt, the clerk, Penny Black. Chris has got, he's a Rochester guy. He's, you can't miss him. He's six-nine, played basketball in Greece. Wonderful guy, family ran big-time restaurants in Detroit. He's been in the business.
So they're experienced.
Very experienced, and he thought, maybe I don't wanna keep doing this. Well, he got a partner that's run big-time restaurants in New York. And they said, you know what, we're not, we're still young, let's crank this thing up. So they bought Penny Black, went in there and said, we understand the concept of, it was the post office and all that, but it's, to us, it's cheers, it's a corner bar. We wanna change, we wanna take the inside, it doesn't function right, kitchen's too small, we're gonna keep it open and keep it rolling, but we're gonna open up the hole inside. So if you go into Penny Black now, you feel like you go on the right side, it's kinda boring, left side, it's kinda.
Too separate, very separate.
It is, and they don't like that. So they came in and said, we're gonna do this whole thing into one big concept, really upgrade the menu. And then they, functionally, and I think it's because Chris is so big, so tall, when you sit at that bar outside, the outdoor bar, you are, it's somebody sitting on the railing facing the street, ten inches, and then you're rubbing somebody's back that's sitting at the bar, and there's no more room in there. So he says, why do you guys have this two-foot gap between the fence and the property line? So I explained to him that we were worried about when they first came in, that people walk by smacking a drink, or a pedal catching a bike on the fence, so we moved it in. The pillars of the brick matched the building, so it was pretty classy. So he said, okay, okay, I get that, but functionally, if I got ten inches, one foot, ten inches more, I could make this better on the inside for everybody. If I took the brick pillars down, I could really make it more functional, so people aren't dodging around it. So he came in with the plan, Patrick looked at it, I looked at it. We're both of the ilk of, there's a reason why those pillars were put there. It's classy looking. They wanna just put a straight fence and then landscaping on the fence. So I said, I'll tell you what, staff's not gonna weigh in on this, but we're gonna let the planning commission, we'll talk about the, why it was put in that way. You can explain, Chris, how for functionality you want it to work and why, and if you can make it as pretty, that's great. So what they came back with was, instead of, in the gap between, if you can picture the pillars to the sidewalk, there's a brick infill. They wanna take that out, put boxwoods all along it, stood to green it up, soften it, so your bike pedal would never catch the things, which sounds great, except for that street, there's no room to push snow on the sidewalk, and it gets a lot of salt. So I said, you have to really figure out what you can put there to make it work, not just in the summer, it's green, in the winter, it dies all winter. So I'm gonna leave that up to you guys. When they come in, he'll make a presentation, explain why they wanna do it, and that's exciting. He also signed a lease and took the entire former downstairs of Docatallis Building, the.
Where the bank was?
No.
Oh.
The bar.
Yeah.
Limelight, all of that. Ochays, thank you. Ochays, he signed a lease with Doc, just like Silver Spoon did, which basically said, hey, we're running the restaurant, it's gonna be a Mediterranean Greek restaurant, and they're taking, the partner him can divide their time up, and they're gonna crank that out, and on that riverfront, that is an absolutely beautiful space.
It is.
And they're very excited. So they're, it says on, they put a banner up, it says Ernie's. Not sure where the name Ernie's came from, but.
It's always had trouble getting on its feet.
Always, always. It always has, and there's a reason, we think, and they believe that, you watch Silver Spoon tripled their business. Nobody's being involved in there other than Rito and Joe Narda, nobody else.
They don't take advice from others.
Thank you, and I think Chris and his partner will not take advice from anybody else. So I think that's gonna be a home run. Get that underground parking painted white and lit with LED lights, and you got the greatest parking in the city. You're covered. Right now, you don't wanna go down there, it's always scary. So they're all teaming up with the owner to make this something special, and I think that's gonna kill it. That will be really good. So he's vested in this town in two things, Penny Black and that.
Okay.
And second, I can, I'm happy to report that Peter Collage did purchase the Spartan. We had talked about this at previous meetings. He decided to keep it. His family's gonna run it.
Has a retail hotel?
Yeah, so he's gonna, yes, so he's gonna call it the Rochester Inn. It's gonna be a boutique hotel. Had a meet with the folks before, before Royal Park, I think everybody knows how Royal Park's sold to a big group that are committed to keeping it a four-star restaurant and really crank it up, but with the present ownership in Sue Keels, we had Peter meet with Sue, and she was like, hey, if you make that place a boutique hotel, I'll send my overflow there. Believe it or not, if you gussy it up, and it's a, I think he's looking at, what, a hundred and ninety dollars a room?
They have overflow, huh?
Oh, oh, yeah. So he said, they would like people that would wanna be down there. It sounds so weird to think Royal Park's Spartan, but if you see, when you see the plans, what he's doing, he's gotten the hole inside, everything brand new, opening up the outside, putting glass so that it's enclosed, redoing the lobby to make it like a, which, whatever hotel, you go and you can get up and get breakfast for yourself, or you can have a coffee or drink late, just for the people on site. It's not a restaurant. He's gonna open up that lobby, and he's gonna wanna keep that front entrance because he wants people to be able to drop off stuff there, drop off their people to check in. Now you'd go around the back, find a spot on the street, and check in.
So it's not gonna be branded, it's gonna be a private name?
Correct. Rochester in his company, it's his family gonna run it. So it's just a facade change technically, but you're gonna wanna talk about some of the details on it. So we met today, he's gonna try, he will be on the July agenda. So he's gonna get it in here with his architect. We met the architect today, gave him a detailed list, get this done, get it to Vidya, we'll get it to planning commission, we'll get you done in thirty days after we get it in. So, so that's what, we hope to have those two items on your agenda for July.
Okay.
And at that point, I think that's all we got right now. There's a couple more coming.
So Penny Black facility there, the property, so that one side, the south side, they can expand. Can they expand now?
Right on that property line, to get eight inches, I think. So he's trying to pick, that one's not as tight. It's that front that's tight because of the bars up against the building, so. I, it doesn't matter. Like, I like the brick pillars, I'll tell you that, but we'll see, we'll see.
Yeah.
Okay. He's not doing it, he's spending money, he's not, that will cost him more money to do what he wants to do than if we left the pillars, I can tell you that, so.
Any questions, David?
I have a question. On the fence, is that a requirement that they have a fence, or was it a good idea?
For the liquor license.
You have to have the fence, okay.
Is Dr. Attala leasing his new apartment?
At the present time, I don't think he's signed one yet, and the rumor is because there's so much construction going on in the basement yet, that people are, it's pretty loud. So once he just gets over that initial, so he's just about to start drywalling, or he might have started drywalling down there. I think he will, but I think he's got good interest, the price point's right. They're very nice. We went and looked at him. Mayor met with him, I think, and he was.
I haven't seen.
Oh, you hadn't gone inside, though, that's right. Oh, you saw him at a place, right? So he was just, we have one little mechanical concern in the basement, but once we get past that, he can move on with that. But upstairs, they've got CFOs, they can have them whenever, he can lease them.
Just seemed to be longer than.
Yeah, we expect the people to be moving in, but we've heard from a couple people, it's still pretty loud during the construction.
Okay.
Which is understandable.
Yeah, two questions. Is there anything new on the Randazzo Riverwalk?
So he called me and wanted to meet with the chairman, and I, Tony's a different guy, so he's gone through Eagle now, he's trying to get his permits. The next step is to move the dirt before he submits all of his building stuff, and we told him that that's a public hearing in front of the city council, because anything over thirty cubic yards has to come in front of council. Council's gonna say, we're not gonna have you dig the whole hole out, and then without a commitment, when you're gonna pull a building permit? So he, I talked to him last week, we were supposed to sit down with him. He likes to feel the temperature, I think, of the community, and he's not, he understands what prices are. If he was to build that building now, it'd be thirty million dollars, so. He said that's not stopping him. He has his own supply chain that he can work through, but I suspect he's gonna let us know in the next week if he's gonna go ahead with the, finish the engineering. A W's done their job, Eagles, it's a cut-and-fill situation, so we're not holding them up. It's, he's gotta get in front of the city council to ask for that dirt moving thing. We wanna know.
How many yards, by the way?
It's three hundred and fifty semis full. So it's, we need to know where he's going, where it's going, how it's going, what time. We're gonna hold them down, because you cannot afford to have a hole there with sheet piled, until he's ready to pull the building permit. So I think we're gonna be pretty, hey, pull your building permit and start the work. I can see that.
Could we reuse any of that dirt?
It's dirty. It's gotta go on glass three.
Okay. So.
It wasn't transfer station.
So the, this keeps changing, though. This keeps not getting done.
Just like Mosheri and like the two Suaves, yeah. It's very frustrating for us. I can understand when somebody bid a project out at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, now it's four hundred and fifty. I can understand that, but I, it's frustrating.
It's frustrating.
He hasn't said he's not doing, he keeps calling. He's spent a bunch of money on engineering with Eagle, so I don't, he hasn't walked, overlook. Finally, they called and said, uncle, we're not spending any more money. Mosheri, I'm not spending any more money on that project yet, but you're gonna see Mosheri in August on another project, which will be interesting to see how you guys.
On that site?
No, on the elevator site.
Okay.
So they're closing next week on the elevator with Rewall as a partner. And we'll see.
And going up.
But we'll see.
I'll just say, Mosheri right now, to me, has very little credibility in this city.
Yeah. Lot of talk.
So I'll say that publicly. And then the next thing is, you know, I'm happy the Spartan is, you know, improving. As someone who lives there, you know, that's a cancer in our community, so anything that can be done positive would be good, but I mean, I'm.
You're watching.
I see some paint and some stuff, and that doesn't really do much.
So, so I agree, Mayor.
Not to sound so.
No, no.
Sounds so cynical tonight, but.
Yeah, so what happened with, and I agree, and we let Peter know that if we had our way tear it down and build six houses there, or put a nice little something in the front, and, and don't come in with paint. So what he did was, because he bought it and he wanted to operate it.
That's closed?
No, he kicked, Chief Shettenhelm was here, he'd tell you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Everybody bad's gone. It was pretty bad. He freshened it up enough so that somebody, the contractors that are staying there now, it's not smoke and horrible stuff. So that's a temporary fix, and he'll, he'll explain this whole thing. He is a builder, and he, we met, I love him. He's, and he also bought the one forty-seven North Lane. Remember the Roger Knapp house up behind the apartments?
Yeah.
That was a gorgeous carriage house and the pool. Well, Don Jagoda bought it, sold to a guy that gutted it. The next guy gut it, and then said, I'm done, walked away, and it's destroyed. So Peter bought it, he's tearing it down. He's got a lot split at the county right now. He's gonna split it to, he's gonna build his residence for his family, and then one for his son next to it, so it's gonna be two lots.
No historical considerations or?
No, it's already demolished.
That was, that was the Bed and Breakfast?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which was.
Up by Golden Eagle there.
That was just, that guy did a great job. He was.
And then he sold, and the next guy decided, I'm gonna make it my house, and then destroyed it. So sad. John, Don.
He did a great, I mean, he did a fantastic job.
He spent a ton of money. So that's, so Peter's into the town, he bought that property, literally closes tomorrow, and he's gonna tear it down and build two brand-new beautiful homes, him and his family are gonna live there. So they're from right here, they're from Oakland Township, so. He's, I think he's all in, I think you're gonna like him, and he's a builder, so he knows costs. There's no surprises for him. He won't be.
See, Patrick, we got a few things for you to.
Yeah.
Patrick's already jumping in.
This is exciting times, huh?
And then the big boys, they're right on the corner. We saw surveyors back out the overlook again.
Where?
On the overlook, by, they were out there on the private property. I'm like.
Great spot. It's a great spot.
That was just pure money. That came in at four hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. You can't afford to build. That's nuts. And Rewall bid it, and he was embarrassed, but that's what it is. There's a lot of concrete in that place, so.
Well, that's like the community house.
Exactly. Three point, what, one million?
Yeah.
I have one, right on the, at the south, when you come down the hill, there's that dry cleaner and that, is there anything with that?
Yep, I can give you an update on that. So James Riley owns the collision shop. He's owned it for seven years. Him and his son Travis are, they have enough ilk to not have to worry about making any money and paying the taxes there. So we write them up every spring, clean up the parking lot, put a chain across, nobody parks there, fix the broken window, or tear it down and just grass seed it until we get something to happen. The premise was, if I could get the cleaners, I can do something proper there. So finally, the cleaners, the gentleman that ran the cleaners didn't pay rent for two years, and the people that own it in L.A., they don't speak English very good, so there was a lot of disconnect there, and they finally had had enough and asked the gentleman that ran the cleaners, which we loved, to leave.
So he has closed?
They closed, they gutted it, all the equipment's out. I put them on noise, you can't do anything there other than a cleaners because you have no parking. If you had to come in front of this planning commission and ask them to buy parking at a thousand-dollar space, where are you gonna park? You're gonna park down three blocks away, so that might be, so we don't want your money, you can't park anywhere. So the logical places for the cleaners, for the collision shop to buy the cleaners, so he went out there and met with them, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a piece of property that you can't literally use.
It's contaminated, isn't it?
It's got, yes, and that plume is now on his site.
Yeah.
So.
Have we talked to the other cleaners in the area?
Yes, and nobody wants it.
How about Sunrise down in Rochester Hills?
I, which one?
Sunrise at Tinkin' in Rochester.
Um, no.
Jay Lee?
No, I've not talked to them.
That's not a good business, no.
Yeah, so it just, there's no parking, that's the problem there. But, so I can tell you this, that some, then a group of investors from Birmingham went to Riley that he knew him and said, we're just gonna buy your property, and we're gonna come in and do what the planning commission wanted. Three-story building, no special project, straight-up zoning ordinance, thirty feet match and got, do it. It was thirty million dollars. It was thirty million dollars. Boy, if we had that cleaners, we could make the, stretch it out a little bit, and it would be a better financial investment. So they went to the cleaners, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, the guy said, I'm not getting extorted. So he, he backed out and bought, he's buying Solaronics instead, to do a mixed use over there. He's gotta come in front of here, obviously. So, so right now, there's no plan, we're back to ground zero on, um, on the cleaners. Now, with the Moon River situation, so we met with Carlos and Liz five times now, and I've given them five places that they could temporarily move the manufacturing facility until they can get back up. They just finished the investigation with Edison last Thursday, and there's a good chance they might try to rebuild that. The worry is, it's a hundred-year-old foundation, and if you have to meet today's standards for eighty-eight, you're gonna build a lot more sturdy building, so we'll see. But I think they're leaning towards renovate it, because if you, if you really looked at the fire, they stopped it at that second floor. The water destroyed a lot of stuff, but it's okay, they could add that story back on top.
Stone foundation.
Yeah, base, Michigan basement, basically. So we sent them to James Riley and said, take the collision shop, paint it, put new windows in, it's a block building, heat it, let them make a stove in there, and you could actually retail out of there, because it's, it needs to redo the parking lot. So I, I think they're ended up heading towards Fieldstone, Fieldstone closed, Patrick, he just, he closed Fieldstone Winery. So we put them with Whitby's to see if they could go in there temporarily. So, so I, if we, if Carlos doesn't go into the cle, the cleaners and the white building, I think he'll tear it down and just grass it until he makes a decision what he's gonna do.
Wasn't, uh.
Long answer, Christian, sorry.
The one party looking to take an action against the cleaners for contamination?
They, they don't, they weren't there, just realizing, it's just moving dirt. The good news is, it's not in the water system, so it's just pulling out the dirt, and it's not a very big site. So maybe a brownfield possibly, which might help induce some of that stuff for the city to decide if they wanna go that route. So, um, land is tough to get right now, I think you're gonna see some movement on that ultimately. And James is telling everybody finally, if you're gonna buy it, don't go to the planning commission and ask for a special project, ask to do what the ordinance allows, three stories.
Yeah.
And make, and park it yourself down the hill, we'll work with them on the alley, so we can make it work. I, I've been with Patrick on this, and we're gonna make it work sometimes.
It was a great idea, it was a great site.
It's a great site.
Over, way over, no.
It, it's embarrassing coming down the hill seeing that, so. And Chief Financial finally got over the hump, they put the curbs in yesterday, or Friday, and now they're gonna start paving, and they're, they're working hard on the inside, but boy, it must take a long time, he's pretty frustrated. Trades, they couldn't get the trades to do all that work, you saw that was a lot of brickwork.
We had the opening for that, like.
We did.
A year ago.
It was, the rim, the groundbreaking, yeah, yeah.
Dirt work was.
So that, and then the Village, am I gonna keep going here for a second? So the Village Shoe In, so I think, they actually today paid for a upgrade of the four, while we were in, uh, Fourth Street, we said, we've got the water main there, if anybody uses that, you're gonna have to sprinkle it. To sprinkle it, you gotta put a four-inch line, we do not want you ripping up our new road to get to the middle of it. So for six grand, you can, we'll put a stub, and you're good. They wrote the check today, stub's in, that's gonna be, that's gonna probably be this, um, a, like a, not a supper club, a.
Entertainment.
Thank you, an entertainment club, the guys from Romeo, they're, it's gonna be one, like one-off of the casinos, the.
There's one in Lake Orion also.
It's like, it's like Front Street, two-ten, two-twenty, whatever, it's Front Street, same thing, twenty Front Street.
Twenty Front Street.
Twenty Front Street, and the one in Romeo, this is the guy that runs it, and he's all excited.
Ever we heard, uh, an awful lot from the downtown people last fall about wanting something like that in town?
And I think they're ready to roll.
And they came to the DDA.
DDA, explain who they were.
Really good.
Very, very positive, yes.
A lot of use for that parking structure.
Oh, yeah.
Quite a building, so.
Yeah, and then Saint Eighteen Eighty-One is about to open, they're, they're gonna paint the outside, they're ready to roll. He's having some problems with the VFW's trash, so he wanted to put up a nice white fence down there to keep it out. Talked to him about that, today they're just about ready to go, the, the old church on Walnut that the.
Oh, the coffee shop, yes.
That place, that's a European coffee house slash drinks at night, it's pretty cool. So that's going, they're ready to go, Schneider is building on the inside of the first condos, he sells one, he's gonna build the next, all of them.
Okay.
He just needs one sold, and he, it's obviously the brick parts up by Ferndale and Glendale.
Quite a substantial building he has.
It's skinny, but it's, yeah, it's substantial. And, uh, so one sale, and he'll pull the chair on the rest of the nine. So he's got four technically going right now, so.
Could you build those at the cleaner?
Yes. I know, that.
How many could you put in there?
Yeah, right, um, more than ten.
Where the gun shop is.
Yeah, yeah, the cleaners, when you come, the old collision shop, David, when you come down the hill on the right side.
On the east side. I'm talking the other cleaner, Tide, could we put?
Oh, oh, Tide?
Could we put Brownstones in there?
Tide's doing okay.
Oh, I thought you were just talking to her right there.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the cleaner, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the cleaners.
Oh, Colony or whatever.
Yeah, not Colony, but the Village cleaners, I'm sorry. Oh, you're thinking Tide, you're like, what happened so far, I'm sorry. No, the one by the bridge on Main Street South, that little village cleaner, sorry.
Across from like Tulare.
That's where you looked at it.
By the Penn Station place.
Sorry, that, that one, that's when I, no, Tide's fine.
Don't knock that one down.
No, sorry, you're, that's where you're looking at it. Yeah, no, that one was kinda last legs for a long time, so, um.
Liquor store.
What else?
Oh, that drive.
So Solaronics is.
Yeah, Solaronics, so if the gentleman, they have their purchase agreement, they've agreed to a price with Rush, it's a, probably a three-story apartments, built at the high end, tear it down, start over. And they know the yards there, and they, the trail, they know they have to give up the space on the trail. These guys are, money's not a problem, they want in here so bad, they want upscale housing, and they see what's on.
Hopefully they can work that out with the Trail Commission.
They already, I haven't talked to Melissa, yeah.
Look to your right.
I think they already talked to Melissa, actually, they're doing their due diligence right now, so. I don't, this is, I told them, don't come in and do a song and dance again, submit your plans, let's go.
Right.
We don't need to hear about dart-throwing volleyball courts and stuff again.
So welcome, there are gonna be things to work on here.
Thank you very much.
I have someone in the waiting room, do you want me to let them in on the phone?
Yeah, please do.
Hi there, who's hand, if you have your hand raised, uh, can you go ahead, you have to unmute yourself.
Mute, you have to unmute him, maybe.
I don't think she can, I think they have to.
Is Brian?
Brian, can you unmute this?
Is he here?
I think he just yelled no.
I think we, uh, we're.
There they go, okay.
Hello?
Good evening, who is, who are we speaking with?
Oh, you're speaking with Jane Turner.
Hello, Jane, how are you tonight?
I'm fine. I wondered if Vidia has any meetings set up yet for the zoning?
She is not here tonight.
We, we don't have a date yet, but it's supposed to be in, we're trying to shoot for June, so we do not have that meeting yet set, Jane.
Okay, anything new on the old school?
Nothing. I am actually having lunch with Dr. Shaner Thursday, and I'm hoping he's gonna tell me something.
Oh, good for you.
Lucky me. I mean, lucky me, I'm gonna get to find out what.
Stay tuned, Jane, stay tuned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for calling.
Thanks, bye.
Goodbye.
Yeah, I hope you'll give me an update with what's going on.
I hope so.
Oh, and I, we heard a rumor today, last one, the Ra-Ra Building sold.
Good.
The one down, and they got a quite hefty price if it's true.
For a, uh, an industrial user?
Nope, this is pretty cool. So a guy had called me, I thought, I wasn't sure if he was for real or not, he called me about a month and a half ago.